...order at six o'clock. Gary, can you take the roll?
Scott Fishel?
Here.
Dennis Keeney?
Here.
Denise Brewster?
Here.
Lynne McGrassy?
Here.
Lori Kreniski?
Here.
Stanford of Pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the provisions of bylaw 0164B of the Riverside Local Board of Education, which was adopted in accordance with section 1.450 of the ORC and the Ohio Administrative Procedures Act. This meeting is a work session, and the work session is to address the capital improvement plan, and I will read the Policy 7100, Facilities Plan. The Board of Education recognizes that careful prudent planning is essential to the efficient operation of the schools, and that planning must be grounded on accurate data. In order to assure that future district improvement supports the educational program in response to community needs, the Board will prepare a capital improvement plan and will revise that plan periodically thereafter. So what the capital improvement plan has been known as up till now is the five-year facilities plan, but our policy says it should be the capital improvement plan, so we'll make that change to follow the policy. And what the Board had voted on last year was, instead of the Board preparing the capital improvement plan, the Board voted to designate that responsibility to the Superintendent. And part of the reason for this meeting and then the future meeting to approve a future capital improvement plan is to correct that and then operate according to this policy moving forward.
So I just want to make a note that I did consult with legal, and we were in all, we were very much in the right white path to go ahead and appoint our Superintendent to do that. So although the policy says that, we do have to approve it, and that's all that we needed to do. So there was nothing wrong with the way we proceeded, and I'd just like to point that out.
Well, thank you for pointing that out. And now with the capital improvement plan, any thoughts, ideas, alterations or changes do you have in mind, Ms. Kreniski?
Dick, you called the meeting. I thought we-
I'm asking if you have any ideas?
You called the meeting. I, again, was fine with what I voted on the last time.
Okay, so Ms. Grassie, do you have any thoughts or ideas that you would like to add or change?
Specifically, I just think that the plan as presented did not reflect what the community had requested, and what they had, and what their input and what the community survey input recommended.
Okay, thank you for that. And so what we know is that a lot of work was done, and a lot of input and a lot of work was done, and we know we're moving forward with an eight classroom addition at Riverview, and we have a Buckeye improvement project, which includes an addition and gym and work in the Buckeye Building and Melridge Building. So those things are set. There are other items in the plan that we can look at and possibly make some changes. And Mr. Keeney, would you have anything you would want to add?
Not at this time.
Okay, Ms. Brewster, do you have anything that you would want to add?
I know under the Buckeye addition on page, what's it, 13? Yeah. It says that this project will include revitalized interior space of the original building with modernized classrooms, two lab spaces, media center, cafeteria, and gymnasium for elementary learning. I just want a little clarification on that because specifically, when you talk about the two lab rooms, are you talking about the '90s addition?
Yes.
Yes, so those are those two rooms?
That is actually taken word for word. I didn't actually give credit to it, but it came from the Bielski point. I paraphrased it from that.
Right.
So that was their description of the-
Okay, so the media center is the current library?
The media center is the current library.
Okay. And the current cafeteria, which also serves as a gymnasium?
It's a, yeah, it's a multi-purpose.
Multi-purpose, correct.
Space, correct.
Okay, all right. So the gymnasium is, it said, you know, that they were, with the addition of eight to 14 classrooms, grades three to five, kindergarten-specific rooms, meaning that they would mirror what Parkside and Riverview have in terms of additional square footage, and they have a bathroom in the room and a utility sink. Is that what it means, kindergarten-specific?
That has been the standard of our kindergarten classrooms, which are larger than our typical elementary classrooms.
Okay, all right. And then the gymnasium added a Buckeye. With that also, because I'm on that committee right now, it's my understanding that there would be a stage in there because you're, the plan to renovate the multipurpose room that serves as a cafeteria gym right now would possibly have an expansion depending on, I don't know, the way it was constructed, whether you could expand into the area of the stage.
I think that's some things that we are looking into as to whether we can take that stage out to make it more cafeteria space, looking into kind of what that would. Is it cost efficient to do that, what it would take? We know that the floor is hot, so we would assume that some other things, I was also debating probably the entire floor, so that, not that that's not a recommendation, I think it's if you're going to go in and do the work, that's not a bad use of funds. But I think that's, I imagine that's something the architect, we'd want the architect to get in and look at. We've had some of those conversations. And then when you put the stage in as the gym, we've taken a look at some of what that looks like and what the court looks like, to be similar with the other two newer buildings, similar size, that gym is much smaller, so put a similar-sized gym in, or some of the same resources as well.
All right, all right, sounds good.
Mr. Arlesik and I had a short conversation in discussing the cafeteria gym at Buckeye. And the stage right now is raised, and so the idea is that it could possibly be cut down to floor level and have that floor continued, and if you have to abate the floor, of course it'd be a brand new floor anyway, either way, and it'd be the time to do that. So Mr. Arlesik was going to head, just take a look at it to see if there's any bearing walls or things that we have to deal with, and certainly, you know, that's the thought, that that would be expanded such that you would have sufficient cafeteria space over there, and then, of course, you'd have a new gymnasium. So right now, that's a possibility that could handle the cafeteria space that would be needed. So, yeah, so that's one thing that's being looked into. So another item that we're looking at is the immediate needs, most of that work has been or is being done, and really what we're looking for are intermediate needs, short-term, meaning two, three years down the road, and four, five, maybe six years down the road. And so what does that look like? And as with any plan, as you move forward and learn more information, things change. And so in looking forward, you know, what are the possibilities? And I think that there are many possibilities, right?
We presented a number of them.
Right, so there are options and different possibilities that can occur. And a lot of it comes down to what is our wish list, where are our needs, and then how much money do we have?
Not enough.
As with most of us?
It's not enough.
We have to make choices, right? So, yeah, so looking into the future, what are we going to do? And one thing that, when I came onto the Board in talking with our former Superintendent, Kalis, he, Jim mentioned to me that his biggest lament in leaving was he was never able to get the eighth grade out of the campus. And what I would say is, everyone that I talked with said that's probably, you know, the biggest thing, the eighth graders probably shouldn't be here. Do you agree with that?
I'd say that that's, we either need to put them in our own building or treat the high school as an eight, 12 building and not an eight, nine, or a nine, 12. We've talked about both, and I think that's kind of ways to look at it. There are more schools who are doing what you would call non-traditional configurations because they're actually seeing decreased enrollment, where our enrollment's staying consistent. If we could get eighth grade out but keep them on site from an, or from an efficiency standpoint, having your secondary, so seven through 12, kind of on the same, in the same area, makes a lot of sense. You have classes, you have students that go up, travel up who are very accelerated, you have sport, you would cut down on sports and gym spaces and all that. So that's one that has come out. Obviously, we can't add another grade to this facility. Adding onto this facility, I don't necessarily, other than CTE, I don't think is a realistic expectation by any means. But I think in moving them somewhere, in putting eighth grade in transitioning to somewhere with, that's a, either a seven, eight building, or a six, eight building, or even a five, we've talked about a five, eight building, something like that, it does make a little bit more sense. There's always, we can weigh positives and negatives to any plan that's out there, and we'll make it work. So I think, from a standpoint, from an instructional standpoint, eighth grade teaming makes a lot of sense. I think that's something we are looking at doing within this section that we have, with Mr. Hawke, kind of taking a look and thinking about it a little bit different, which we've done that, we've done that prior, and then we had to make some cuts and we brought them back more into the high school schedule, so it just depends.
Can I interject? I have two questions. So first of all, we have this facility plan in front of us, and we're sitting here talking about things that, quite frankly, in my opinion, we should have done before we accepted the facility plan. Like, we're going back and we're reviewing the facility plan and saying, it's really not a facility plan, what do we want to do? I thought that was what this facility plan was supposed to do, number one. Number two, we had a plan to get the eighth grade out of this campus. We had that planned when we asked the community to support a high school and a new middle school on this campus. We had that planned, we had that planned previously, so it sounds like we're rehashing the ideas that we had previously. And that we're sitting here in a meeting, going to rehash this report, because now it's not good. You just passed this. I'm confused.
Okay, so we're looking for a path forward. When you say you had a plan before, I wasn't on the Board at that time, is that the plan that was put to the voters that the voters rejected?
Yes.
Okay, so obviously, that didn't work, so now we have to go ahead and create something that will work, and that's what we're doing right now. This Board is in the process of fixing things, and we need to move forward and take care of those things that need to be fixed, and that'll be one of the items. Now, of course, that's going to be years down the road. We have our hands full with three projects right now, and there's not too many school districts that have three projects going on at the same time, and so we look at-
We don't have funding for those projects yet.
Excuse me for a second here. So appreciate your interest in interjecting, but please wait till I'm finished. And so what we're looking at doing is, we want to execute these plans, we want to execute them with great success, and then we want to look forward to see what else we need to do to satisfy the needs of the district with the whole goal. The whole business that we're in here is education. We want the students to have everything that they can have, that we can possibly give them, so that they can have the best educational opportunity possible. So that's the goal. And so as we look forward, some of these thoughts are all on the table, and I would just want to put a basic dollar amount on that. In looking at it, depending on what's done, the size of a building, or buildings, or whatever it might be, it's going to be a substantial amount of money. And so I think we're looking at between $15 and $20 million in the future. And the whole goal, and just for everyone here in the room, anyone that might be watching or listening, one person on the Board, myself, my thought and my idea of that goal would be to do everything out of cash flow. Very important, don't go to the people for any more money. Everything is out of cash flow. The people voted for a permanent improvement levy, which is continuous, right? And that was in what, 2015?
Yes.
So with that, we get $2.7 million, and that will grow a little bit, not a lot, but it'll grow a little bit to two, eight, two, nine, possibly $3 million in the future as new houses are being built that aren't part of the TIF agreement. So anyway, as we move forward and we utilize that permanent improvement levy money that the taxpayers are already paying, very important, utilize that money to do all of these projects. Now, the Riverview project is being paid for with cash in our permanent improvement fund, we've already discussed that. The, we had Mr. Purcell, right, you invited Mr. Purcell to come and offer ideas of what kind of money could be borrowed as we need it, and so we would be looking at borrowing off of that permanent improvement fund, no different than what a person does if they're going to do home improvements and you borrow off of their future earnings to pay for those. So that will be taken care of in the near future, after we get all our costs together and we know exactly how much we need to borrow. So that'll be done, and then we can look into the future. But right now, at least one Board member's perspective is that we are not going to be asking the people for another tax levy to do permanent improvements, because the people have already voted for that and are giving us the money to do the things we're doing. Our job is to take that money and use it as effectively and efficiently as possible. Every dollar should be spent wisely to satisfy the needs of the district, and that's part of what we're doing here, just taking a project that's already been developed and refining it a little bit. And so this is a first step, this is a work session, and we put some ideas on the table, we have some discussions, we've already had some, and so that's the reason we're here. So Ms. Grassie, did you want to add to that?
I sure do. So we have not yet agreed as a Board, I don't believe we've ever had a resolution on this table, to agree to pay $5 million in cash for the Riverview addition. We haven't had that resolution to appropriate those funds for that, number one. Number two, we can't leverage all of our PI funds, or all of our future PI funds, for things such as construction projects, when we pay for things like buses, technology, band instruments, and other infrastructure improvements out of our PI fund, plus we have, if I recall, a field turf that's probably going to have to get replaced, and we'll have to take some dollars out of the PI fund for that, because we don't have enough set aside for that. So we can't, we can't just part-blunt say that we're going to leverage our PI funds. I need for folks to understand that, we can't leverage all of those funds.
Well, I disagree with you, because I've run the numbers, and maybe-
I would like to hear from our Treasurer on whether or not-
Maybe you've run the numbers, maybe you haven't, and certainly, we can discuss that if you'd like.
I think it needs to be discussed at the table, it does need to be discussed, not what, like, it's not an if, it's not a question, that's what this table is for.
Yeah, well, one of the things I wanted to say is that on page 19 of this plan that was initially approved, it talked about funding the plan, and there were conversations with our Treasurer, Mr. Placco, about the permanent improvement money, and in the short-term that, you know, it talks about, you know, how we would leverage those permanent improvement funds, and it wasn't to drain the fund and use every dime, it was to use a very, like a portion of those funds, and still leave money for the buses and for other things that we need, but it was to be able to make the payments over a longer period of time. And it was my understanding, Mr. Placco, weren't you meeting with him again and getting some more information?
We're working on putting things together for the borrowing for the Buckeye-
So we're waiting to hear the particulars, and that's the COPs funding?
Yes, Certificates of Participation.
And just for everybody, COPs, like, what, is that an acronym?
It's an acronym for Certificates of Participation, which is the borrowing, we kind of reviewed. It's basically a lease, type of leaseback type of borrowing arrangement that was explained during the December meeting, that we're looking at for the Buckeye addition.
Okay.
You know, some of the challenges are, we're, you know, we have the Career Tech and the Riverview additions underway, and design, ramping up on those, and we haven't gotten the true cost estimate from the estimator from the design, what was ultimately designed, so that's a concern, to make sure that, when those come in, hopefully, there's no surprises, but you never know until you know, and so we're waiting for those numbers to come in, which we won't have for probably a month or so, maybe longer. You know, with the Buckeye addition right now, there's conversations on what the scope of that truly is going to be between what we're adding and what we're doing inside, which obviously, that scope, depending on what you ultimately land on, could, you know, vary that borrowing amount a lot. So we also had discussions about the length of time we borrow for, obviously, the longer you borrow for, the lower your angle payments are, and what's the best strategy there. So there's a lot of moving parts to really, you know, to finalize, and, you know, until we have those estimates, until we go out to bid and actually get those hard numbers, we don't know for sure what those numbers look like, so there's just some caution there, just being cautious of, we don't want to get too far down the road and go, oh, no, now we need to value engineer and take things out that we, you know, which is always a hard process of taking things out of what you want to do, and you end up with something less desirable.
Caution us also, as we bandy around a figure of $20 million, that's a lot of dollars, for just a little bit more than that, you could build a whole new elementary school. So I take issue with that. I also feel like we're not taking into account the current climate, and if something were to happen and we lose funding in some of our grant funds, we're going to be in a world of hurt, and I think we need to, we need to consider that, because if we tie up PI funds and we lose money in idea funds or title funds to some degree, we have to be prepared to be able to find those dollars somewhere else, because it's not like we're going to cut those services. And so as a result, like, there's a lot at play here, and I think we're missing a lot of information.
So permanent improvement money is for buildings and buses and things like that? Can it be used in general fund for title, for this, that, or the other?
We can't use that, that's correct. We can't use, we can't use permanent improvement fund for things that we would do in general instruction purposes, I understand that, however, if we're looking to put general fund dollars into these projects because we can't bandy up the amount of financing or funds that we need, because we don't even have cost estimates on these projects yet, I worry about that. I worry about that, and that is something that we should be concerned about.
Mr. Placco, what's the unencumbered, I was looking in all my reports, I can't find it easily, what's our unencumbered amount in the PI fund today?
At the end of January, it was, it was $4.7 million because of the architect contract and owner's up contract we signed recently, so we're still waiting for our tax advances to come in, they're coming in, I think, today, actually, so the number will go back to probably closer to six here in the next month or two.
Right, so thank you for that information, Ms. Grassie, and as we look at the dollars and we look at the cash flow, one thing that we need to be clear is to not confuse the general operating fund and the permanent improvement fund.
I think I was just clear on that.
Excuse me while I finish, I know you want to interject, but please wait till I'm finished. So the money in the permanent improvement fund is permanent improvement money, and so that is not general fund money. That money is not used to pay teachers' salaries and benefits and administrators' salaries and benefits, okay? That is used for permanent improvement, and that's what we're talking about here, okay? Those monies are not mixed, those are two separate accounts, I'm sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure to know-
Ms. Kreniski, please don't.
I'm sorry, do you want to know that Ms. Gralston has a Treasurer's license?
Please don't, please, please do not interrupt.
I'm just sorry, I don't think she needs to be managed, what is going on?
Just wait, please just wait your turn. Why do you want to interrupt?
Because you don't have to explain to her how it works, she is a Treasurer.
Excuse me, you can wait, okay, my goodness, there's a protocol. So anyway, those are two different funds, okay? And so the permanent improvement fund is used for permanent improvement, okay? And right now, we are looking at approximately, because it fluctuates, but as money comes in, we're looking at approximately $6 million in the permanent improvement. Right now, it's 4.7, but it'll be $6 million in what, 45 days?
Approximately.
Approximately, right. So part of the projections on the cost of the Riverview addition included the architect's fee, right? And you're saying that's already been encumbered?
It's already encumbered.
Okay, and that's what, $325,000?
It's probably somewhere around there, I don't know.
I believe it was $325,000. So when you're looking at an approximate, and the idea in looking at that space, the approximate number was about $5 million, and using a little bit higher estimate to try, to, you know, try and make sure that, you know, you're not having to reverse engineer at the end of the day and take things out, $325,000 of that has already been encumbered. And so, and we will have approximately $6 million. And so we don't have to go through every line item right now, but Mr. Placco, the Treasurer, we, and I have had this discussion in the past, how much do we need in the permanent improvement fund to pay for Chromebooks and buses and different things like that, right? And so we know that we have enough in there to do the things we're doing, and we're doing these things in a way that's very responsible. So as we move forward, the next step on the Buckeye addition and project renovation, which would include Melridge, that would be looking at getting a loan.
Did we ever approve Melridge at the table?
Mr. Placco, technically, that's a bond, right, the loan?
It operates like one.
Yeah, so, so when you look at, when you look at borrowing, when you look at borrowing that money in the future, that money would be off of revenues, and a certain percentage of those revenues would be accounted for the payments in the future, which would leave the operating money for the buses and the Chromebooks and the other repairs we needed, and the turf that we're looking at in the future. And so we've had some of those discussions already, and so as we look forward to getting finalized numbers, that's, Ms. Grassie, when we will identify the exact amount of money we need to borrow and what that looks like in our cash flow.
So have we all had conversations? Have we had a resolution to approve additions or improvements to Melridge? Did we do that? I don't recall any of that, I've been to every meeting.
All right, so the resolution can only be done, okay, when we have the number that we need. We don't have that yet, and we haven't borrowed the money yet, so there's no resolution yet. This is in process.
Okay, I'm going to ask again, did we have a resolution to make improvements to Melridge?
Let me, may I say something? We did give authorization to the architect to proceed with improvements to Buckeye and Melridge, so that was approved.
To both?
Yes.
That is one project, and so when you say to both, just to be clear, that's all rolled into one project. So anyway, as we, as we look at what we're doing in the future, we're looking at a lot of the work that's already been done, and as, we'll go back to what we were talking about, and you're right, Ms. Grassie, $20 million, that would pretty much be a whole new school, and so that's what we're talking about here, whether the options were to build it on campus, right, or over at Lamuth, we do have the property to do that. And so we have opportunities, and so what do those opportunities look like? What is the best, what are the needs of the students, and what's the best way to utilize the money to satisfy those needs, and that's what we're looking at. So what we're in the process here is refining, refining this capital plan, the five-year facilities plan, so that we can be a little bit more identified in what we're doing. There are a lot of options in here, and tonight is the first step towards that, and we're having a discussion. Some items have been brought up, and Ms. Brewster brought up some clarification over at Buckeye, and I would like to talk about Lamuth a little bit. So Superintendent Rotino, if we are looking at Lamuth, and we're looking at what I figure might be approximately five years, that could be here, it could be Lamuth, but for the sake of this conversation, if we were looking at Lamuth and we were looking at taking the eighth grades, eighth graders from the campus and moving them to Lamuth, and at that point in time, the most likely scenario is, we're going to have enough students flowing into Riverview to where we're going to need the fifth grader space, which would bring the fifth graders from Riverview and Parkside over to Lamuth, which would satisfy a desire that people have of having the fifth graders together, and that would also open up another four sections, four classrooms, over at Riverview for the new students coming in from the developments. So at that point- So, at that point in time, you would have four and four, four from Riverview, four from Parkside. You would have eight classrooms moving. And then, and right now, Lamuth is packed full. There's not one single classroom available, right?
It is, it is full.
Right. It's sardine time over there.
It's not sardines. I mean, it's, it's movable, but it's, it, it's as full as it was six, eight years ago. We've had some, we've had these numbers before.
Yeah. And so, we're maximizing our space, right?
We definitely are maximizing. That's a good way to say it.
We're doing a good job.
We are.
So, all right, so that's good. And so, if you look at the eighth grades, the eighth graders, we have the needs of approximately 16 classrooms right now. Now, some of them are a little bit split, right? You have, you have some usage where some of the kids are split into not full classrooms right now, right?
Can you restate that a little bit? We have some of our eighth graders who are still, programmatically, our eighth graders are taking high school courses as well as eighth grade. They, they have the opportunity to take, take a language, select a language. They have an opportunity to take coding or, you know, some of those. So, programmatically, some of the programs would have to change in what we offer as well as potentially even graduation requirement. There's some unintended consequences to potentially moving them off. Algebra or eighth grade math is one that they, that's a big one where our accelerated students take algebra. So, there's a, I think eighth graders can run up to, I don't know if they're three or four high school credits.
So, I was talking with Mr. Hall and he said that not all of the eighth graders are in a classroom, classroom, they're split up sometimes and sometimes you need other spaces?
I'll have to get more clarification.
Okay. So, anyway, I was just taking that at face value. So, how many eighth graders do we have?
This year, it's a small class, so it's about 250.
But we're closer.
But typically, we're, I would say, to be honest, safe, we want to plan for 325 kids.
Right. And that's what I was figuring. We were, we, we were 300 plus to 325.
If you look at historically, our enrollment, we've always kind of settled around between 300 and 400. About 450 was our highest when we were open enrollment. But even when we were really full, we were about, we were about 400. I would have, given trends and all that, I would say it's safe to say we're going to be about 350 to back on.
And, and so, we've been steady for what, about four years on enrollment now?
We've got this, so we've got a dip in seventh and eighth grade, but then below that, we are pretty steady around where.
Well, I'm, I'm talking aggregate numbers.
Yeah, holistically, we are pretty steady.
4100 or so, plus or minus.
Which is, which is against the state national trend.
Right. We're growing.
Yeah. We're not growing, we're staying.
We're, okay, right, we're staying.
Everyone else is shrinking, we're just staying.
Right, right. And, and I say growing because I'm looking at all these houses going to be built and we're going to have an influx of students. And so, we're preparing for a little bit of growth. And so, when we have declining enrollment and we have ascending enrollment because of, of the developments, we have to do our best planning, right? And, and that's what we're doing. We're, we're trying to accommodate the space that, that's needed for that. And then, in future, you know, what are the possibilities? And for certain sure, somebody think, some of these things are going to change because there's going to be more information that changes things. But if we could look into the future and we figure we're looking at about 325 plus or minus, maybe even up to 350, how many students are in a, in an eighth grade classroom right now?
So, it depends on the class. Do you have anywhere between the schedule? But we try to keep them around between 25 and 27 on an average. And the average class size changes.
So, if you're 25 to 27, ideally, okay? And, and not that we want to push it a little bit to 28.
Well, when you, well, when you have a larger class size, like if you have a bubble class, those class sizes just get larger. It's just, it's a, it's a scale of economics because you can't just add one, you can't just add one teacher, you have to add a.
So, let's say we're at 25.
Okay.
Okay? And let's say we're at 350.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We would need 14 classrooms.
Sure.
Perfectly.
Yeah, perfectly. We have perfect.
Well, it's perfect, right?
You made it, you made it more.
So, in that, a little bit more, I'm thinking, okay, if you need eight and we had 17 or even 18 to accommodate the eighth graders and, and maybe some additional space for whatever it may be, labs or whatever, you're looking at probably, you're looking at probably 25, 26 classroom. And if you looked at today's dollars at $500 a square foot, Mr. Placko, that's the top end right, right, right now, right? I mean, you were back to 400 years ago, then 450. Now, if you want to be safe, you're figuring 500, right?
I would say 500, yeah.
Yeah. And so, if you're looking at 500 and bump that up to 26, then, you know, you're at 13 million already, right? And so, then you're going to have other needs, cafeteria and things like that. So, I just wanted to give a general idea of, you're looking at dollars, you're probably looking at a $20 million school, as Ms. Grassi would put it. Certainly, it's, it's, you know, it's almost a school. So, whether you look at it as a, an addition or a school, it's, it's certainly going to be a large amount of money. So, in looking to the future, I think that's probably five, six years out. And that would be the perfect world that we would be able to accommodate that. And again, the whole idea and the planning is to not ask the people for another, another dollar of taxes. We'd be doing that out of cash flow. And again, getting the most out of the money, every dollar. We want to get the most out of every dollar we can. So, I just wanted to put that on the table because as we look through this and we look at what the opportunities are, that's one possibility. The other possibility would be doing something here. So, so if we did something on campus, how many classrooms would you think we'd be looking at?
We would, in terms of to build a new school or in terms of...
Well, if you were building something on campus, how would you configure?
To this campus itself?
Well, on the property.
To, on the property, I would, I would look to build probably a, a secondary building, whether it's seven, eight, or to keep them with, or six, seven, eight, something to that aspect. That's not a $20 million project, I know that, because you have a lot more infrastructure you have to put in there, there's all that that goes with it. But that would be, from a programmatic standpoint, that, that would be kind of an efficiency standpoint, you can run some efficiencies through that. I also think building on campus provides us opportunities to partner with other organizations to make this more of a hub. It's a little bit more centralized than Lamuth. The pro, the concern, not, it's not a problem, it's a real problem, but a concern we would have to work through at Lamuth is Auburn Road and getting the additional students and parents and traffic flow through Auburn Road and all of what that looks like and how you pull that, that traffic in and out as well. And then also, we've partnered with like Concord, baseball, we've been in partnership with them. They've done a lot of work to the, to that side of the property. But when you look at what we've done and what we've rendered for prior mod and going back to the 90s, we, we found one from a middle school that was designed there that failed by, I'll say it was 20 votes or 30 votes. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was because of a lack of communication with whoever was going to move the baseball. So, it is very important to partner with our, you know, our organizations to look at that. But I think, I think putting it at, at Lamuth gives you some great opportu, absolutely some opportunities to move eighth graders physically out of here and put them, keep them in the middle school. You gain some of that with the five through seven middle school too, you still have that three-year span. But then having something up here gives you opportunities to partner with and maybe add some additional, not only community facilities, but also just school shared facilities and a partnership like Willby has, you know, City Willby, the YMCA and...
The Willby South, yeah.
Yeah, the Willby South complex or even the North complex with the Arts Center and what they've done. They've done some creative partnership with their communities. I think Painsel Township. And I know Concord as well, but they are both really amicable too, partnerships and working together to provide opportunities for our stakeholders. And when you look at all of our non-students who attend schools, to have those availabilities might be worthwhile as well.
So, if you were building here on the property, how many classrooms approximately?
I'd have to, I, you're putting me on the spot.
Quick man, quick man.
I would guess, I think a middle school is typically like 32. Yeah, we're looking at probably 32 for a middle school.
And then, of course, you're looking at everything that goes with it.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking, it's expansive. They've, I think they're, I think, what, 60 million, I think they've seen for one recently that was completed.
When we were going to put up the middle school. When we were going to put up the middle school, it was 185,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Do you remember how many classrooms that was?
I do not. All I know, it was 185 square feet, or 185,000 square feet. I do, I do have a question though, and maybe, maybe Gary or Mike can look this up while, because I can't find it. I just want the dates on when we approved Riverview and when we approved the Buckeye addition. I'm curious. We added Melridge, mechanical, electrical and plumbing, but I don't remember approving any of that at this table. We never had that conversation. It did get into the approval of the then design for design services when we increased their fee to 785,000 and we did that on January 30th. But that was the first time I had ever heard of anything that was going on at Melridge. I left this meeting on, on that date, on January 30th, like questioning, when, when did we approve Melridge? I had never heard of Melridge. So, I just want to kind of know what, what our agenda item when we approved the Buckeye addition, what that said, because at that time, that did not include Melridge. So, so we're asking then design to provide us with design services for something we didn't approve at this table to do. I just want to know how that process works. I've been on this board for 16 years. This is like, I've, I've never come across this before where we've actually hired a design firm to do work for us for a fee before we've agreed to even do a project. So, we're adding it. Just, I'm just asking. I would like clarification on that.
I'll, I'll throw something in. There's, there's a lot of things with the original Buckeye building and the Melridge building that are unknowns. We need their professional guidance in telling us exactly what's going to be needed at those facilities.
I, I understand that.
Before we move forward with doing anything at those facilities.
However, we, we are increasing their contract to $785,000 and we approved that on January 30th. The board approved that. I believe I voted no. But that was approved to include Melridge mechanical, electrical and plumbing improvements. So, apparently, there's a project on the books that we're asking them to do something for that we didn't approve and I want to know when we approved it.
All I'm saying is those studies need to be done before we can make a decision on what we are going to do. We need that professional input to let us know exactly the scope of the work and the cost of the work.
I'd like to know what the Buckeye resolution said.
The Buckeye resolution was approved on December 19th.
Thank you.
That was, the Riverside Local Board of Education hereby approved moving forward the building approximately 12, classroom addition plus a gymnasium addition on the Buckeye Elementary School.
And, and, right. And so, all of a sudden, on January 30th, we, we approved, or there was a resolution on, at this table for Buckeye and mechanical, electrical and plumbing improvements at Melridge for then design services in the amount of $785,000. What are we asking them to do and when did we approve doing it? And when was it discussed at this table? We didn't discuss it. We never even discussed it. It didn't even come up as a report from Buildings and Grounds. It was an unknown. I left this meeting utterly confused. Where did Melridge get into that picture? I'm just asking. I would like some clarification on when that, that discussion happened at the board table. Well, we could talk about all the rest of this stuff till the day is long, but we're, we're not, we're not actually discussing what we've already approved and projects we've already got, like sitting here on the books that, are we doing them? Are we not doing them? I don't remember a resolution to approve that.
So, going back to when, when we discussed on September 3rd at the board table, okay, items that we were going to do, and then you put out to the public that we never discussed it at the board table. And then in the Buildings and Grounds, which you were a board member of in the committee, a rendering was put forth.
Right. At the last five minutes of the meeting, I saw a rendering of Riverview. And I remember saying, where did that come from?
And, and, you said that that had never happened. And then later, you said you agreed that that happened, but you said there was no discussion to your memory.
There was no discussion. It was you speaking.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that the board table has discussed items. I know that you continue to refute those items, but we are looking at accomplishing projects that are much needed by this school district. Some of that information needs to be developed before we have a formal resolution to approve a dollar amount. And, and some of that needs to be developed and investigated and information gathered from, from parties that, that would have that information.
So, again, I would, I would like to ask...
Before, before we could go for an actual loan amount, okay?
The members of this Board of Education and our administration, when we discussed Melridge at this table to determine whether or not we were even going to ask the architects to do work to design something, improvements to something, when did we talk about that at this table?
Okay. So, Ms. Grassi, we're moving forward on items and...
So, you're not answering.
If you, if you have a formal question or complaint, please send it to me by email.
No, I'm not sending it by email. We're doing this in open table. That's what this meeting is for.
Well, we're not going to go back and look at months of minutes right now, okay?
I would, I would like, I would like some on record when we discussed that at this table, Melridge.
Well, thank you for that request.
Thank you for that.
Okay. So, when we're looking at the possibility of doing a, a school basically here on the property or we're looking at the possibility of doing something over at Lamuth, I know that when I had previously looked at what the possibilities were of, of location over there, one of the topics that was certainly at the forefront were the ball fields. Can't eliminate the ball fields.
Cannot eliminate those ball fields.
And, and then also, we have the parking and the flow of traffic, okay?
And, and the neighbor, and the neighborhood behind you is small, yes.
And the neighbor that the driveway goes way back to that house, right?
Not so much that one, more on the Ellison Creek. That neighborhood's also been a great neighbor.
Okay. So, you're talking about the houses really to the south?
Yes. Yeah, the Ellison Creek development, kind of moving towards the back in some of those.
Okay. And so, then that's still the same question of the parking lot and the flow of traffic.
The parking lot and flow of traffic has always been a, with the way that Auburn Road is set up, being a narrow road with lake on one side and really steep culverts on the other side, there, it does need, it will need to be addressed in any type of expansion because when it drop off and pick up, to some extent even here, at all of our schools, we struggle with that. But Lamuth is one that definitely struggles more than, more than others. And if you're going to add students, we have to at least do some studies to justify or to make changes to that. I think that's, that's our prudent nature to take a look at.
Right. And that road is a little different. There's a lot of traffic.
It's a lot different.
There's a lot, a lot of traffic here, but it's basically flat.
Yes. That's, that's not a flat road.
Over there, you're coming up a hill, going down a hill. And, and so, that offers its own challenges.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, you know, these are all of the things that have to be considered when all of these things are being considered. And, and, right. And, right, and so then you have some opportunity in the front of the school and to the right of the school as you're facing it. So there's some opportunity, but then the question is, do you have one in and out, or do you have two? And then how much traffic control would be needed to handle that?
Ideally in a school setting, you have a separate drop-off pickup for buses than you do for cars, especially in a school setting where you have a lot of bus riders. The high school, we don't have as many bus riders as you do at all the other schools, because some of our students are driving. Not that that doesn't change the danger involved with a parent of a teenage driver, but we do have a separate, we have a separate student entrance here as opposed to that. I think having a separate, I think it's prudent to see if you can design a completely separate closed loop for buses and closed loop for cars, if that's possible.
Right, and so I think we have the opportunity to do that.
There are people smarter than I am who can figure that out.
So, well, I mean, I'm saying we have land that we could probably accommodate.
We do. I think we do. I think we have that one entrance that's typically gravel that we've never paved. If we looked into paving that and making that part of the lot, we could definitely explore it too. I think that's a, that, as, if we were to expand anymore, you're increasing your staff cars, you're increasing ultimately everyone who is showing up. It would behoove us to definitely look at traffic patterns, traffic flow, design and improvements to not only the building, but also the grounds that it sits on.
Talking of Lamuth, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, I looked at just some enrollment numbers, latest ones, and they're all pretty consistent. But right now, Lamuth has about thirty-one classrooms, if I count correctly, I don't know, but around thirty-one classrooms, and it handles half of the fifth grade students, sixth and seventh.
Third? Third and fifth grade. There's, yeah, our fifth grade is, the way our fifth grade is set up is roughly set up in the thirds. Lamuth actually has about a hundred. Parkside has about ninety, and then Riverview has a larger class this year, about a hundred and five, a hundred and ten. So it's about a third.
In any given year, it's a third. Okay, so right now there's around nine hundred and fourteen students. If you add, okay, no, right now you have around seven hundred and five students at Melridge, and that comes out to about twenty-two, twenty-three per classroom, you know, if you just did straight math. And if you added fifth grades from Parkview or Parkside and Riverview, that adds another couple hundred. So that would take you up to close to thirty per classroom, which, you know, you really don't want. And so that would require the addition of some more classrooms if you were to do that. If you added the eighth grade over there along with all the fifth grade students, that would put you up to around thirty-eight per classroom. So if you figure, you know, through through some math, essentially you would have to add twenty-eight more classrooms or another school. And the way you guys are talking, there's a lot of issues over there with traffic and elsewhere, so maybe all that land is not as beneficial as you may think it is. I don't know, but, so, like you say, you're almost doubling the size of the school.
You would be. The one thing I would say about my concern, you can't just do straight math. When we have full grades, you have to have specific unit classrooms, specialized classrooms. They take up, they occupy a full classroom for up to eight students. So you have to have some of those into account, and more than you would think. And then you also have other specialized subject area, like your electives and your on-court classes.
So just interject for a moment, the more than you think it, that has been growing.
It has been.
Yeah.
We are doing a lot of our due diligence to keep those numbers down, but it's also more affordable for us and the right thing to do, for us to educate our own students in-house instead of sending them to separate facilities.
I'm just saying, if you go back ten years, there's more of those students today.
There are.
So the trend, we just have to be aware of that.
Yes, absolutely.
In our planning, so, sorry to interject, but I wanted to add that, Mr. Keeney, that there is some of that need that'll probably increase.
Right, so I'm just talking straight classrooms, obviously there's more. So if you just went with sixth, seventh and eighth grade at Lamuth, you're looking around eight hundred and fifty students. You'd still have to add about a dozen classrooms, so.
So no matter what, this is a circular conversation because.
If you were to add a grade, if you were to add a full grade, so if we were to add all the fifth grade, for instance, we would need between eight and ten classrooms to truly service them at the best way possible. If we were to add eighth grade, it would be about the same, maybe a little bit more. Not because, not necessarily because of the number of students, because of the types of program. So the types of programming changes. You would potentially in eighth grade, you may have to add on, well, I guess in both grades, you probably would have something with the cafeteria, which is truly landlocked in that building.
Well, the cafeteria is kind of maxed.
It is, you can knock anyone, you can knock maybe, but then you have to find new places for classrooms if you knocked out all the walls to make other spaces. So I think that there's, it does present some challenges, but some of it's doable. I think two grades is a stretch to add it to that. I think one grade and going, making that a three-grade building is a very much doable proposition and one that I think we can, really can do. And the other, traditionally Riverside too, we've always been flexible in what we've done with our buildings. We've built spaces that can be hybrid. So if we needed it to be five through eight, we saw a surge at that point, or five through seven, I'm sorry, if we saw a surge at that point, we could do that. And then with the idea of eventually, as things leveled out and equalized and built out, level back down and look at going back to a six through eight building, putting the grade back in our redesigned elementary building. So I think that we've got the opportunities for that. But, you know, like you said, Mr. Bischel, the next five years are going to be very telling. Not only with all the housing starts, but also looking at housing starts, prices, where those students are coming from and the families that are moving in. You know, those are, those are a little, those houses are, I think they said the average is four hundred. I don't know how many, the young families in four hundred thousand is a lot different than middle level. So we may see a bigger need for students at the secondary level. We know our schools are desirable for students to move into, and they look to get for high school. So we may see some growth with there too.
So when you look at the campus right now, well, let me back up and say with the Heasley Park, half of the students went to elementary and that flowed into Buckeye, right? So that's pretty much done, but if you, taking what you just said, if you're four hundred thousand dollars and maybe four hundred plus, possibly, they're not just, half of the students are coming to elementary, maybe it's a little bit more mature and you have more students.
You might see more, absolutely.
Becoming six through twelve. And so if that were the case.
Fairway Pines is another example. They were a lower price point. We saw a lot more families going to them. But also the housing market is in flux, is what Mr. Keeney said.
So let's take your statement and build on that. So let's say that we have more six through twelve. What opportunity, what space do we have available here at the campus to accommodate that right now?
That's, that is the crux of the issue. As big as this building is, we do need to do some redesign to some of our, like a space like this is not, was very useful when it was built, does not serve a modern-day educational setting at all. We can't even test in this room because one is raised above the other and so they can look upon that. So things like that where this was designed for originally, it no longer fits. Our best, our best course of solutions to this would be to put heat and air in it, first of all, but then also level it and kind of divide it into separate classrooms or smaller spaces and big spaces.
Okay, so we could make, we could create space here.
Yeah, we can gain space.
But as it sets.
We have some opportunities.
As it sets right now.
No, as it sets right now, this is not.
Do we have any classroom space that's available as it sets?
As of right now, our classes are full.
We're full.
We are full.
So right now we're full, and so what we'd be looking at is if we have additional students coming in, is we'd be growing class sizes.
Our class sizes would grow, the numbers would grow, but our class sizes are not out of control.
So here we're kind of okay.
We can, the larger the number is, the more you can absorb it. We can absorb students a lot easier here than we can probably in any other building. The next then would be Lamuth, because you have three hundred, you know, in sixth and seventh grade, because you have all those students who kind of come together, so it disperses down a little bit. Eventually you have to up your numbers and add staff, but we can pretty much absorb here without adding staff. We also do creative things, like we currently don't have teachers who travel. Doesn't mean we can't, but we've had teachers who've taught on carts. They've gone from one room to the next, and it's a little bit easier now than it was, because you don't have to log in, you just plug your computer in, we give them a laptop, they go and plug in, and everything projects. So we can't have teachers travel and not necessarily be within that. It's not ideal, it's not ideal for the teacher, it's not ideal for the, for the teacher who has, kind of has their room as a home, but we do see some of that. We have some traveling teachers up here too, to make some of our classes work a little better. Not, not a lot, but that happens, and ultimately the goal is to always get your own room. And that's what, you know, that's what kind of made it in education. I don't, with the state of being so competitive, because we are, you know, the job market's competitive. Every advantage we can have to make people not travel, have their own space and feel comfortable is a good one, so.
Right, so we do have the ability to absorb some students here. I know in my initial investigations, I found out to be the case here at the campus, we have the ability to absorb a little bit, so where we wouldn't have to make too many adjustments.
The other thing I would say, and I don't mean to interrupt, the other thing I would say is, high school now and high school today looks very different than high school did ten years ago. And some of the programming we're even doing today and offering with our, like our Auburn Academy and our flexible personalized learning or flexible learning options, CCP, online CCP. Students have a number of different options, so they're not, a high school student isn't always here throughout the entire day. In fact, if you come by at any one time where we're in class change, you'll see people, you see students coming and transitioning and changing because they have classes other places. They have, so it's a different look than it used to be. So to go way straight, number of students, number of seats, number of classrooms at a high school isn't as accurate as it is in an elementary school or even a middle school.
Right, well, I know, I have come here around ten-thirty and I have a granddaughter. She's ready to leave. It's ten-thirty, so.
My daughter gets here at one-thirty on one day and I think it's twelve the other day, because she has other classes she's taking in different classes, so.
One question I had was, for example, with five sections of fifth grade coming from Riverview and four from Parkside going next year to Lamuth, is that a bigger number then to absorb, but then I know they can spread out over the sections.
Yeah, they're going to average next year, I think we did the math, about twenty-seven per class, which is.
So it'll be a little higher than.
It's a little higher than it has been.
But not a lot.
I've been there where it's been thirty-one.
Okay.
It's not ridiculous, it's not ideal, but not ridiculous.
It just happens to be that.
Yeah, and so when we say average, teachers are going to have classes of thirty-one, thirty-two, and they're going to have classes of twenty-four, or twenty-two. It just depends on where kids, other electives go and how the schedule falls out of their needs. But we do work to kind of average, but it averages out, so.
Okay.
Right, so these are some of the things to think about, and I know that with the work that was originally done, some of these ideas are already printed.
Well, and there's, so if you look at segment two, we put three options out there. We put the option of new high school, felt the need to put that because that's what survey data came back to say that some of us maybe want. Put the idea of new middle school as an economic approach. New middle schools are definitely less affordable than, or more affordable than a new high school. And then put the idea of adding on to Lamuth, so it is in there.
Right.
As an opportunity, like I said, it's a lot of this year, next year, as this development starts to get rolling, it's going to really tell us, or it's going to be a good indicator as to what we're getting from it. You know, how many students per house? And I know that they talked a lot about, they're building a lot of ranches and the desire of ranches that have older families that don't necessarily have children. I grew up in a ranch with my brother. We were packed into a smaller house. Ranches can have kids too, so I think that's not, I don't know if it's as telling as it.
Well, I grew up in a ranch too. I mean, most of my neighborhood, you know, filled with kids and they were ranches.
And ranches are the new, they're very desirable in the market now. I mean, there's a whole new ranch development going to explode, so.
So I understand that when you're planning, you have to go on historical data, and that's sometimes the best you have, but things do change, right, like what you're saying?
They've never been able to predict our enrollments, so.
Well, when you say they, that's a whole other conversation.
Those are the enrollment study people, yes.
So who were, who were the they? So, yeah, I think that our previous superintendent was saying that he kind of thought his numbers were better than the they numbers. And he turned out to be right.
He was.
So, yeah, so we definitely have to put as much time and effort into figuring that out as much as possible. I mean, again, you go back and you look at Fairway Pines, you look at the Heasley Park developments, and you get an idea of how many kids are coming per household, but you have to have a range.
I believe I gave you, I can look back and see what those were.
Well, yeah, I got asked for that and you gave it to me, yeah.
Yeah, we picked as many as we could. We even went into Summerwood, because Summerwood's finally all developed, which is a little different as well.
Yeah, it, right, right, fully developed, a little older, and, right, so the Heasley Park and Fairway Pines. Fairway Pines is just kind of completing now.
Yes.
So, you know, that will be finished, and then we have the other four developments, right? Three or four developments that are going to bring us a few students.
You see, yeah, you see some popping up, people are selling their land and they're buying the developers and they're popping up.
And then, and then the other big question, the Concord Air Park.
We're not going to talk about that.
We're not even going to talk about it, right? Because if that happens, it's like.
It's, I would put if that develops like it is, I would put us on the same realm with some of the Columbus schools that are bursting.
Yeah.
Because that's going to bring a lot.
But there's ninety-nine acres next door. That's where we were going to put a school.
Concord Cliffs, I'm sorry for that.
Yeah.
That is not Concord Air Park.
No, there's Concord Cliffs and the air park. There's a lot of land in Concord.
Yeah. And Concord.
I just saw they're getting the, UH is getting a cancer institute.
Who is? UH is?
UH, they're putting aside a cancer institute.
Yeah.
Or a tri-point.
Oh, okay, okay.
Of course, that's going to, that's going to bring some people this way, all those supporters of that.
Well, I guess we're not, we're not losing students.
We are, we are staying the same. If not, I think we're going to be consistent for a while, and then I think it will be, we'll see kind of, we still have some older areas that families love living here and they're not going to leave, but they're empty nesters.
So I think we, you take a look at some of the items and any thoughts or ideas or changes. I think that we maybe can have another meeting to take another step. And, I mean, like I said, a lot of the work's been done, so any of the changes, I think, would be minor. A good discussion to have, so do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up the segment one and segment two.
Are you all the way in the back?
Yes, I'm way ahead of where.
Well, no, 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 I just wanted to know where you were.
Okay, so, yeah, I talked about prioritizing. I know, like, for example, the athletic turf replacement money's being set aside, a special fund for that.
So I understand, Gary, I think when we were talking about that, Rich, when we were talking about that, that was about eight hundred thousand dollars, right?
At the time I received that budget number, it was estimated eight hundred thousand.
And we had two hundred thousand set aside for that, is that right? Yeah.
Plus there's a potential for an advertising deal to secure some advertising.
Right, and that's the goal, right, that there would be some participation?
Yes.
And if that doesn't happen, we have to plan for paying for it.
Tell me we keep going to a different hospital to see what they do.
Okay, all right, well, okay, so it's encouraging and it's hopeful, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I talked about the twenty-four inspection and estimated, I'm on page fourteen, estimated two to four years of safe surface play remaining. So what do you realistically feel, because we just did the trap, so.
I think they're spot on with two to four. We do, we do use our turf a lot with a lot of play and a lot of activity. So to say that it would, it would be detrimental to our athletes and students in two years would not be a shock. We have done a great job to this point with working with VASCO to assure that we're grooming properly and we're testing properly, but we did see a lot more evidence of failure this past inspection.
Yeah, and so when you say failure, that's the turf coming loose?
Yeah, seams coming apart, tears from, you know, could be cleats, it could be just use over, you know, yeah.
Yeah, because you had it out here, at least it's a proposed project timeline, so this is not hard and fast.
No, everything is really just a, I don't have a crystal ball, things are going to change. I don't know what's.
Because right now it's summer of twenty-eight.
Well, it needs to be a summer.
Yeah, well, definitely.
Yeah, so that's, we put it there and we.
So you put it there for now, but it could change.
To kind of put it, yeah, it's, then it becomes a safety issue at some point.
Yeah.
Hoping, our, I tell you, our maintenance department does a great job with the turf or the amount of use it gets. So you come over here, especially, you would think it's the fall, but it's not, it's the spring. If you're over here in the springtime, our turf is occupied, there's a group on it from two o'clock till ten o'clock, between all of our sports trying to practice on it, and so using all different types of things. So to keep it as long as it has, it's, you realize the turf, and you're expecting, I think it's eight to ten years, and I think we're going to get more than that, so we've done, we've done a nice job with it.
All right, well, I just wanted to talk about the proposed timeline, because obviously we have in boldface the CTE edition, and then they. and then the addition at Riverview, the multi, multi-classroom and gym addition at Buckeye. And then it talks about some other things that are not highlighted, but, you know, when that might happen. There's no crystals ball, we don't know what things that start or finish.
Kind of asked to, you know, one of the things I was asked to do is incorporate some of the work of the Bieloski report into some of this as it would fit. So when I put like, I'll give you an example, Lammuth Masonary work. As we do some work with that, we know we're going to have masons out. That could have been a alternate bid for some of our other projects to see what that would cost you, get economy of scale. That was my thought behind that and kind of doing it when it's not going to disrupt the educational process along the way. So, so that was really the thought they're putting these days. They are all very flexible and truly financially driven. I mean, how much does it cost, how much do we have, how much can we work with some of this that's there? So I put those numbers together and we sat down and we talked about what it looks like and what are the most, the critical. And I, I worked off the real critical projects. To me, it's really important to have masonry work done so that you're not leaking because water's bad inside the building or whatever. And so I think that's a, that's a big one, but I think it's a doable one.
And, and some of the work was done like on the gym, okay, so there's been some work.
Yeah, and as we, as we do a project like the gym floor, we don't just do the gym floor. We went and took the, we've taken the holistic approach of doing it right. And so doing the entire, doing painting of walls, painting of the ceiling, new curtain, so it is, it is turnkey, ready to go. Going to last us another, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years.
And you also, I remember, addressed the wall, there was some type pointing on that with an issue. So as we're in there, we're fixing some of these things.
As, as we're doing some of these things, we are upgrading and making sure that we do them right. I think we're looking at some of those options here at the campus with the CTE building, what we can do to address some of those smaller things along the way. We have contractors, so we asked for some, we asked for a lot of options, are they called options? They're called alternates.
Alternates, yes.
Have we seen a cost estimate for, for high school?
Um, we have not, we have not seen cost estimates for the high school or Riverview, we've, we've continued to ask.
Let me ask you, so we're, we have, we have projects out there with TDA that we're paying them for the high school project. We are also paying them for the Riverview project and then we're also paying them seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for Buckeye. And Buckeye and Melridge to the tune of that project is twelve million dollars is what's in this. I don't recall ever talking about Melridge, but yet it's in here to the tune of twelve million dollars and we're paying them seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to, to provide us with design services for something we haven't talked about yet. I'm still struggling with that, folks. Reading the contract.
Okay, is there anything else? Mr. Keeney?
Because we'll just continue to dismiss what I have to say. I'm asking a question and I would like some answers at this table. When did we discuss Melridge? I'm not leaving this meeting until we, we have some verification of when this board approved a project at Melridge and it ended up in TDA's contract, I would like to know.
Ms. Grassi, this board has approved contracts and work and all of the contracts and work that have been approved are in process.
That's not what I asked you, I asked you, when did this board approve a project at Melridge Elementary School that we contracted with a design firm to actually do design work, to do work that we did not talk about as a board? I want to know.
So Ms. Grassi, I know that you want absolute details on things, okay, and so the absolute-
We, we had to have approved that.
The absolute details on things that you're asking for, okay?
Don't exist.
Are not readily available right now, okay? If you want to discuss it and you want to look back through, through minutes and that sort of thing and see when we approved contracts, what was discussed, what wasn't, please do so. If there's anything that was done not according to law or policy, I would ask you to please bring it to our attention.
Okay, so I'm bringing it to your attention right now, I would like to know when we approved projects at Melridge.
Okay, I know, I know that you-
We have issue, we have approval for, at the board table for project at Buckeye. We approved Riverview additions. I do not recall at ever, any time ever talking about improvements to Melridge and they are in the design contract.
Okay.
And there's a cost associated, an estimated cost associated with all those projects combined at Buckeye and Melridge to the tune of twelve million dollars. I want to know when we talked about it.
Okay, so these contracts have been approved and information gathering and work is being done.
You're not answering it.
And, and I'm not answering the question because you're asking an abstract question.
I'm not asking an abstract question, I'm asking for a meeting date when we approved work at Melridge.
I'm not going to argue with you about it, okay? So if you think something is what, well, I'm staying very clearly, if you believe something has been done-
I'm going to ask our treasurer and our assistant treasurer, is there any record of any vote that we took or conversation in our board minutes that has anything to do with Melridge?
Okay, so that's a request.
It is a good question.
Okay, is there anything else in regards to the capital improvement plan right now in this process? If they're hearing none?
Uh, I do have it.
Okay, question.
Moving forward.
Statement, moving forward.
Do you need me to do anything other than change the title?
Uh, no, I think, I think this is just a, a short process. I had stated that the goal was to have this wrapped up within a couple of months. I think these are really minor changes and really future changes that are probably going to change anyway or could possibly change anyway. And, and so, no, I appreciate that and, and, right, we'll just look forward to the next step.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
And the only thing I would add, because we just had our first meeting with Buckeye Committee. On page thirteen, when it says eight to fourteen classrooms, we're really focusing on eight classrooms to serve those needs.
The board did approve twelve.
I, up, yeah, they officially approved twelve. But as we're getting into conversations on to bring in six classrooms that are full-time out in the modulators. Obviously, there's a transition plan that needs to happen next year where students are in the building, that we're going to accommodate them without, you know, while, you know, construction is taking place. But, you know, this, this is saying eight to fourteen. If we approve twelve, do we need to, I mean, I, I don't want to be finite because we're not done with our planning, but our initial discussions are looking at, yes, we have to accommodate six classrooms coming in from modulators, but, you know, how are we utilizing the rest of that space? We're still having an onsite meeting because we want to get away from what, you know, we had to do to accommodate services and things like that in makeshift rooms or having too many people in a room for instruction, but yet, or using spaces like a library, is it temporary, is it permanent? We, we have a lot of discussions to take place on how many we need. But, you know, at one point, the thought was that there were going to be two wings and we were looking at what was going to happen with the nineties addition. Now we're looking at what an eight-room addition would look like and is that going to meet our needs? So we, we are in a state of flux, I'm just saying those conversations are taking place. We want to appropriately plan, we certainly aren't going to overbuild and financing comes down to the bottom line.
Well, it comes down to how much money do we have and what do we want.
I would, I would agree, I think that you can't, number one, I think in an elementary school, you can't necessarily overbuild. I mean, you can, I mean, to some extent, but adding, adding twelve classrooms, I think, could be very advantageous down the road as we look to shift in what that looks like. So I think that's a, that's a plus. I think also talking with, you know, with Mrs. Smolin, kind of reflecting on some of this. If we're just adding classrooms and not touching the rest of the building or not necessarily, it's an opportunity to revision the building. And I think that's, if we don't do that, that's a wasted opportunity. I would hate to, I would hate to put up to twelve, the ten million plus dollars in the building and basically have brick and mortar trailers.
Twelve, twelve classrooms is half an elementary school. Gary, Mr. Placko, have we, have we appropriated the funds for all three of those design contracts?
Yes.
To the tune of probably a million and a half dollars.
It's, if, 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 it fits in with the current PI appropriation, but in the future, as these projects are ready to go out to bid and we got our guaranteed maximum price, the board will need to vote on those guaranteed maximum prices, the future financings and also some appropriation adjustments because we didn't really appropriate all the funds this year because we didn't know what the true scope was going to be.
But we, we've already appropriated like the million and a half dollars that we have to pay to TDA. Have we appropriated the money that we have to pay to Roger and have we appropriated-
It's all encumbered at this point, so it's in the appropriation.
I, I'd just like to add that I think what our architect said in the meeting the other day was very important about getting the different people together from Buckeye and stuff and really vetting out the uses. What are their real needs? How can we, you know, reconfigure the existing building and add on in the most efficient and effective way for the future? And that will be a very important, I'm going to say, series of meetings because it certainly is going to be done at once. And that's part of our information gathering.
Right.
It, it talks in here about looking at expanding, excuse me.
What page?
On, uh, I don't have what page here, anyway.
It's all on the bottom.
Oh, no, no, it isn't that, for, I'm talking about Melridge, here it goes. Melridge is included in the vision for the district futures. Future updates and adjustment to Melridge's role in infrastructure, i.e. lighting and havoc will be made throughout the implementation of both segments of this plan. And so I just want to say is, we are already acting on, on what this plan has. And so we're, we're moving forward, we're gathering the information. This, this stuff with Buckeye may take a little bit of time, but time is of the essence. We need to, you know, get this all vetted out so we know what we're doing going forward. And then looking at, at Melridge, you know, the HVAC, we don't have air conditioning. We have windows that are sadly out of date, a lot of heat gain in the upper south-facing windows. So there's things there that, you know, the architect needs to look at and give us some information on. So that is all important. All I want to say is that we're already acting on many things that are in this plan and trying to position ourselves for the next phase and what we're going to have to do then.
I think part of the facility plan also said that, that we could build a new middle school or we could possibly build a new elementary school. We haven't really decided on which path we're taking, but apparently, I don't know, we've awarded contracts that are saying we're going to do what we're going to do and I'm, I don't get it. Twelve, twelve classrooms is half an elementary school.
So the reason we're having our second meeting at Buckeye, I think we all agree because we met, our first meeting was over here, is that we need to see the space, we need to see what's here, what the floor plan is, what, what the ideas. It's important to see that and, and you're better informed when you're trying to make these kind of decisions.
And that meeting is set for February twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay, at one thirty at Buckeye?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I would agree, I think it's really important to look at it to, from a futuristic, a future forward and then do some future forward kind of work with the staff and with this, to make sure that they are, we are creating spaces for, for future learning and not necessarily for path.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm not saying that we're not, I'm just saying that it's really, to be purposeful with those spaces is, is a key. When we put, when we put the money into redesigning elementary school, we do need to be definitely purposeful in how we use those spaces. The Riverview addition is pretty straightforward, that was a, that's a simple, that building's not that old, we just added a classroom mirrored what we had. I think Buckeye is a significantly larger challenge, even than CTE, to really take a look at what we can do moving forward for the dollars that we have. And are the spaces that were put on at the time they were built, are they appropriate for an education now? Or what can we do with new construction to build spaces and then renovate potentially a little bit less to make it really truly useful and impactful and ultimately give us more than what we even imagined?
Right, so how does it fit into the future?
Exactly.
Future needs and requirements, and so that's part of all of what we're looking at too. And, you know, unfortunately, what we're looking at is, we're trying to catch up a little bit because that Bieloski report being almost a hundred million dollars means that we have to, we talked a little bit about this, incorporate a lot of that into what we're doing and, and with this work that we're doing here, still needs some work and then we're going to have to capture that and really dig into that Bieloski report and start to execute things out of there and, and be able to, to get as much done with the money as we have. And, and so all of that, when we look into the future, how does it fit as best as we can, right? We're going to make the best decisions we can and it comes right back to the CTE. There's still a couple of decisions that need to be made.
Sure, one of the recommendations in the Bieloski report is heat in this room. I can't say that.
And today, today's a good example.
Example of that, guys.
All right, all right, so the next meeting announcement, Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, February twentieth at eight AM. Insurance Optimization Committee meeting, February twentieth, nine AM. Buildings and Grounds, February twenty-fifth, seven-thirty AM. Insurance Optimization, February twenty-seventh at eight-thirty AM. Buckeye Elementary Committee, February twenty-seventh at one-thirty PM. The Board of Education meeting, February twenty-seventh at six PM. So I move to adjourn the meeting at seven-twenty-six, can I get a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Ms. Brewster on the second, Gary, can you call the roll?
Josh Mitchell?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Ms. Grassi?
Aye.
Julie Christie?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful evening.